Hi, my name is Kimberly Wilder and I am on the Executive Committee of the Green Party of New York State. And I'm so excited today because I'm here in the Village of New Paltz with Dr. Edgar Rodriguez, who was recently elected to the New Paltz Central School District for the school board. As a Green, we've run so many races and have positive energy and hope that we'll win, but it's just so exciting to have a win and to have a new Green elected official, especially someone as articulate and wonderful as Dr. Rodriguez. Hi, welcome.
Thank you for coming to the Village of New Paltz. That's a great place to be at. And I know you've had a wonderful day today and I hope that we have a good conversation.
I'm looking forward to it. So I wanted to ask you, since you're on the school board, some maybe school questions. And that is, looking back when you, I know you had a lot of children in the school. Do you still have children in the school?
Yes, actually, I have three students that will be graduating this June.
Oh, my goodness!
I have twins plus one that has a difference of one year. And it's always been like raising triplets. And all the stages have been intensive, you know, with sharing to share. And now either going through school and graduation is upon us in June and suddenly we're going to have a big empty nest.
So now, it's funny, now heroes are graduating and now you're going to be on the school board. So maybe you just couldn't let go, you still wanted to be part of that community, huh?
Well, I'd like to describe it this way. I think I graduated into being a board member because for the past, well, more than 13 years, because my history dates back all the way back to 1973 when I had a foster child and then after that, I had two other children that I was involved with raising in New Paltz. So I have steadily been involved in the school district. And that's why I say I feel like I'm graduating because across those, it's more than years. We're talking about decades now of volunteer work that I've done in the school district. A numerous amount of committees that I belong to. So I sort of feel that I'm graduating at, to the board level. So I think it's appropriate.
And I was going to ask you, if you could think back as a parent in the school district, what are some of your best memories? Or can you think of one time when you really felt a sense of community at the school or some positive things going on at school?
Particularly, probably the fondest memory that I have was what they described as a K-1 combination. Two classrooms, little without a wall, two teachers, parent professionals, and a large amount of parent volunteers. It was wonderful working with the children and the lower grades. They were so open and honest and just a sponge to learn. And sometimes I would work with my graduate students who would become a little bit cynical about things in life and then I would work with three as a parent volunteer. And it was just energizing, you know, to work with the small kids and the receptiveness. So that was really a great sense of community there because we'd have many parent members, at times over eight, 10 parents in the room. Two teachers, the parent professionals, and the principal coming in and out. And that led to a great feeling. The other great sense of community that we've had is a group called Concerned Parents of New Paltz, which is an organization of parents of children of color. But many of the parents are not people of color. But white parents have had children of color. And that has brought us together with the sort of common concern that we've had, which is the welfare and the economic progress of the children of color in the school district of New Paltz. So there were some particular times that I felt a great sense of community.
And I was going to ask you, I guess, about parent involvement, but maybe that can tie into also diversity. Like, as a board member, do you envision any programs or any way for you to influence bringing parents into the school and maybe supporting diversity and parents who are different, maybe feeling like they can join in?
Yeah, but actually, that's one of the points on my agenda, on my platform, which was that really we'd like to get the kids and the staff in the school district not only to respect the issues of diversity, but to actually defend it and advocate it. Not just work with issues of tolerance, but actually be proactive with the issue of diversity. Because we live down in the world where clearly, you know, we need to be able to speak different languages, understand different cultures, and address the issues of diversity across the board. And that's not only in terms of race and ethnicity, but it also has to do with issue of homophobia, issues of, you know, just tolerance of gender issues, for example. Issues of the handicapped children in the school district, that all falls into the category of diversity. But of course, in the United States, the issue of race and racism is one of the principal issues that I need to address. It's a very sensitive issue because it just, when you talk about racism or institutional racism, it triggers the issue of white guilt, you know, or the question of racism, that maybe racism and other folks are benefiting from it from one way or the other. So we have been able to move and start a debate and a discussion in the community about that issue. We've actually had the school superintendent, Maria Rice, participate in a really challenging training. It's called "On Doing Racism." It's a two-and-a-half-day intensive training where people are confronted with issue racism and the focus is working with professionals and different kinds of organizations. And superintendent has participated in that, some teachers have also. They're expanding the program and I'm hoping that my fellow board members will also participate in that training.
I'm so proud of being a Green that you won. And I'm so proud to hear that somebody who, I know that you campaigned on diversity and respect for diversity, and it is such a sensitive issue. And I think it's to commend this community and to commend you for how you expressed it and the compassionate way you expressed it, that you were able to win on that platform.
There was actually a long growth of the campaign that, I've been involved in education many years and I was really pleased when someone made a recommendation, a challenge actually. And the challenge was that they asked me to support humane education. At first glance, I wasn't sure what they were referring to. And it came from Greens in New Paltz who were animal, they were animal activists, animal rights activists, I should say. And they said, "Well, I believe I will support you, but this is, we work with a group closely in the area and wondering if you would support this." They said, "The National PTA actually has a position on humane education." I said, "Really?" And I've been working with the PTAs for many years now and I really had not heard about it. And it became part of my platform. It doesn't appear in the literature because it occurred after the literature was printed, but in newspapers that I reported in the debate that I had, I described it. So that there, the idea behind that is if you teach children caring and kindness towards animals, that that really can carry across to the whole curriculum to the middle of that individual and can really produce a better human being. So that I plan, one thing that I do plan, unless you know my other fellow board members who will feel about it, they've heard about it in the debate, but I plan to tell things that a lot of people are going towards in the next three years. Will be humane education. So I thought that was really something good. Something else that I heard during the campaigning was another challenge that I received, which had to do, simple thing in a sense, but it had to do with the buses and the schools. And they described, well, some parents described to me, "We have a little school here that's in the middle of the village and the town. Really is at the highest point in terms of the geography of the town. So it's sort of a sense of peace for the town. And there's a discussion about closing that school and moving the kids to the existing high school and then constructing a new high school. So if the current high school will become a middle school." So a lot of, a lot of questions around the middle school are being discussed because the building of new school will be a project of all 40 to 50 million dollars. That's a major decision for the school district. And the question of what happens to the middle school and the land, which is a large parcel of land. And someone was telling me, "A reason for keeping the school in the middle of the village is to allow that sense of community, not only sense of community, but allow children to walk to school." Now, since most children today are behind, you know, either the screen or the computer or TV, that's another type of life, you know, we know it's a crisis in the country and kids need to walk. And they actually expanded that and told me there's actually a program, there are school districts in which they stop the buses about a half mile to a mile from the school building, okay? In order to avoid issues of pollution around the school building. Because in the morning, if you go to schools in rural areas or suburban areas, you'll find, you know, a huge amount of cars idling, buses, you know, that are idling, et cetera. This is, that's one way of dealing with issues of the environment that as a Green I'm very concerned about. Then also we force the issue of the kids walking to school. So the idea would be have the buses stop about a half mile or a mile and then have the kids walk to the school. So that, I thought was a new innovative idea and having sort of courses in education. I said, "Wow, so every day you learn something." It's one of the great things about campaigning and being out there with help.
It's so ironic because everybody used to say how hard it was, like, parents would go, "Oh, I had to walk a mile to school." And then sometimes the old ways come back and there were good reasons and get some exercise and cut down on pollution.
So I planned to advocate for that because it would also save our fuel and fuel has become, we all know, a major issue in our society. So that's something else that has been good about the campaign that I've had, that I'm learning and that I'm open to learning. That's a great thing about being in education, being on the board.
Sometimes I think people think that with Green Party candidates, when it gets very local, it might be hard to find out how you can apply the values of the Green Party to a school. And now I've just heard you say that humane education and respect and compassion for animals and diversity and respecting that and then pollution and children's exercise. So I'm so impressed that there's all these different ways. And can you think of any other strong means?
Actually, one of the things that I introduced to the Greens here locally in New Paltz, because they're very much involved with village governments and the town governments. We have a village and a town in New Paltz, two separate governments, and the colleges. So have been their sphere of involvement. And when I got involved with the Greens, I said, "You know, the village budget, the operational budgets are at like 1.5 million dollars and then there's another part of it that adds up to 6 million dollars. You're talking about 7 million dollars." So I said, "Have you folks noticed that the school budget is 45 million dollars and several hundred people has 2,600 kids? They're the future of our village and town." And I said, "Well, more than that is that officially on the books we have something called the student outcomes." About 13 of them. And it was a vision that was developed in a collaborative way with the community, with the school district, with parents and with students, coming up with a vision of what do we expect our kids to be like after 13 years of education? And the student outcomes, one of the things I did was I copied it. It's on two pages. And I went up to the Greens and I said, "Look at this. Compare these student outcomes, which in a sense are the values that we have. This is what we would like our kids to look like." They're not written in terms of school district measurable objectives, on the contrary. Their goals and the broad definition of goals is something that you attempt to achieve that you can never really get there, that you strive for. And in fact, you kind of never really get there because you're always working towards it. So if you want our students to be civic minded or to participate in government, well, when does it stop? Does it stop when they cast their first vote, you know? When does it stop when they finish running for a particular position? So the student outcome that we're in as goals is sort of a state of affair that we want to be.
And what level is that at, I'm sorry?
The student outcomes are official policy of the school district. It applies to the K-12 students. It's what we expect the kids to be like when they graduate from the New Paltz School District. And the interesting thing was that these official goals were very compatible to the 10 values of the Green Party, okay? So issues of social justice come up, issues of democracy come up, issues of the environment come up. So many of the two sets of goals, to our surprise, were compatible in terms of what had been established here in New Paltz. And it was important because this was not just a dig say, if you will, that came from the Board of Education, but we prepared, took three years to write. There were 26 people from the community, including school personnel, involved in a long process, but trying to find the values of what we expected the kids to be. So that I find, the election that I ran for is a nonpartisan election, but the values of the Greens are kinds of values that underline my own philosophy of education. And like most organizations in this society, we have a struggle that's going on between two general forces, if you will. We describe it as two educational philosophies. You can describe it as two ideological positions. The issue is, is that you have in our community and on the board itself, a struggle going on between people who think that education should use a business model, that if you operate schools the way you operate a, let's say, IBM company, then you will be more efficient. The problem that is, is that schools are not, and children are not chips on an assembly line. You know, that you can add this component to a drop back component, you get an automatic kind of a circuit, if you will. Children are human beings. We don't know at all how children learn, how people learn. We don't understand completely. Like the area of special education, the special education, you know, includes anything that could go wrong with human body and mind that can affect a student's performance. We don't have all, we don't have answers for all the difficulties, ailments, diseases, problems, handicaps that human beings have. So the struggle that's going on is that you have people that believe in top-down management, you know, we direct what to do and say and that kind of philosophy, that the purpose of schooling is to meet the needs of capital in this country, you know? So that IBM needs X amount of workers, well, then it's the role of education to produce people of that capacity. This corporation needs these kinds of kids. That's one view of education. There's another view of education that's very different, which is you teach for education itself, for concepts and you teach knowledge and you don't prepare students for specific vocations or professions, et cetera. And involved, that would be the kind of values that we've been talking about. You know, love of democracy, working with the environment, issues of social justice. That those are the things that shape man and society and that that's one of the students to be conscious of that. The issue of community service, of giving back to the community. Those are the kinds of values. So we have, on the board, historically, when you look at it, you have board members that have either sort of are in one, have one educational philosophy and others, and constantly it's a struggle, sort of the idea you're talking about. Let's say the point that I described earlier of, we have a middle school. The building has been thought of as being inadequate for the current and future needs of our students. And this dedication department is actually saying, you know, you need to upgrade. It doesn't meet the state standards. What do you do with that building, you know? What, if you move the kids out of the building, then what happens to that huge piece of land in that building? And the debate that I heard, that I've been very concerned about because I ran for the Board of Education, is the fact that I actually heard one board member say, "Let's sell the building and the land to the highest bidder." I said, "The highest bidder." That means anyone that could come into town with whatever interest they may have. The town has started has been opposed to Walmart, Walmart and other large kind of retail stores. It's not being compatible with the kind of values that we have here in which we support the small stores and, you know, the mom and pop kind of store approach. So I became concerned when I heard that because it's not just a matter of meeting the needs of capital, but meeting the needs of the public and the community. And so the debate that I have been contributing to is that I argue, but I haven't taken a fall position as to whether we should sell the building or land and the land, but that we need to have a public debate in which we look at what are the needs of the community? That might be met by that building that's there and that land. And actually, I've developed a vision where I said, "If the building is vacated and the students go to a different building, I would love to see an intergenerational center in the middle of town where the elderly and the young can come together, where you can house the village government." Right now, at the moment, we're part of the Village Hall, which is a small building. And there's actually a need to expand it. I watched where the town board for this department. We have a need, that we have a shortage of performing space for young people to perform. And actually, at times, we have groups in town that need to go outside of the town to find space. And we have a building there that provides that, that has a gym, that, you know, I would think it will meet the needs of, let's say, enough a school center. And so I think of, when I think, I enjoy my philosophy of meeting the needs of the public first before meeting the needs of business or capital. So that's an example.
Right, it's funny because when you said there was this wonderful place in the middle of town and this land, I thought surely they can think of a use of that for the children so that they don't just take it and give it to a corporation, but you've just shown that there's a use for the children and elderly and the whole community.
Exactly, right. And I mean, there's two other pieces I could add to that. Right now, the way that the building is located, has a parking lot in front of it. My vision would be to put a park there, you know, with flowers, sculptures, a fountain. Actually, the building is located at an old intersection and the intersection is not aligned. It's a kind of intersection that when you go across it, because the corners are not aligned, you're almost playing Russian roulette and we all go through it because you never know who has the right of way. And one of the things that could be corrected would be, we can align the streets better if we were able to use some of that land there. So there's, this is a different vision. I have a different vision for that building that's based, that's based on the educational philosophy that's different than some of my colleagues on the Board of Education. So this issue of the lens with which you look through reality is something that can affect the outcome. And one of the reasons that I ran was that there was one progressive member that decided after six years that she would not run again. And I said, "I felt obligated." I tried to recruit others, but time was of the essence and I ended up running. It's the second time that I've run for the Board of Education. I actually, in numbers, did better last year than this year, but there's an explanation for it. I received 802 votes out of 1,760 that voted last year. But this year, there were about 300 to 400 less voters. So that proportionally, you could explain. You could explain why I received 749 votes as opposed to 802 votes. There were three candidates for two positions. One received 139 votes, I received 749, the other received 597 votes. It was a kind of electrifying kind of a campaign because there were two campaigns going on in town, in the village, at the same time. And I say, "At the same time," there was a village election for the mayor and for some trustees. But at the same time, there was the school board election, which drew from a much bigger pool of people because it includes the village, the town, and six other municipalities in the area, parts of those areas, because it's geographically, it made sense to send kids to the New Paltz Central School System. So we had to, the universal population was about 12,193 who registered and last year, 1,760 voted. And that was much larger than the village election, which ultimately, there may have been 900 people that participated. So it was electrifying that we had from middle of April, from April throughout April and through May 1st, we had the mayor election going on. And then from May 15th, two weeks after the village election, was the Board of Education election. And I was involved with, working with Mayor Jason West, who's a Green, who's very well-known, who has been a very courageous and intelligent person, who ran for a second time for a four-year term. He did not win, which we can talk about that possibly. But his camp, from his campaign, we learned certain mistakes that we had made, that we made sure we didn't commit in the second campaign. And for a period of two weeks there, we had to change the course of my campaign and approach it differently. Last year, I was very much involved because I was driven by my values as a Green and as a resident of the town, as an individual. I wanted to bring in the non-traditional voters into the process. So I worked very hard at identifying people who live in small communities in our village and our town, in neighborhoods that are not, that don't have the highest status, if you will, that have been kind of looked down at times. Places where you have multiple dwellings and, you know, you could have 200 apartments in a complex, as opposed to the majority of the housing in Paltz, which is really residential, probably your family homes. And I came in really hard to get new people in. It explained why we had a high voter turnout last year.
So you laid some groundwork.
I laid groundwork. I mean, one of the lessons that I've learned is that, and I think for Greens and others, that it can, spontaneity cannot be what guides us, that we need to look at the traditional voter, which is the point that I'm sort of driving at. The Jason West's campaign casted a lot on, because we discovered that something like 70, 75% of the residents of the Village of New Paltz were renters, not homeowners. And we all had this bias that, you know, everyone in New Paltz and the bigger New Paltz, we were thinking of the town. It's a homeowner pays school taxes, et cetera. So one thing that we did was, and ultimately it may not be a mistake because it was important, we worked with that population very closely. But it turns out that they're a transient population. They may not be as vested as the homeowners that live in town. And many of them did not have the habit and tradition of voting. And so what we, well, attempts were made, I think there were enough attempts made to look at the traditional voters who vote on a regular basis. And we stood in front of the polls and we watched the elderly, the handicapped come out of their cars and say, "I vote, I vote all the time, even though I can't get out of this car." I witnessed that right in front of this building. I thought I would have to help somebody get out of their car. They said, "This is the last thing that I do, I'm voting." And for others that we had worked very hard on, it was a second thought, they forgot about it. You know, and then the assumption was, you know, he's so well-known nationally, internationally, that there's no way that he won't get elected. And so I learned from that and we went after the super voters. We had their names from last year and we made sure.
Can you say what super voters is?
The idea of super voters is someone who votes on a regular basis and then you track the voting, the polls, the list of people that have voted and you look at who's voted on a regular basis, year after year. The, you know, the official information, which is all public information, will tell you that. And you can look at gender, you know, you can look at age, you can look at neighborhood, political party you belong to. And all those factors you really got to consider when you're trying to use whatever resources you have. And we found ourselves with that. We found ourselves with that, you know, people in the other campaign for Jason who were very discouraged and they had to go from a defeat one night to the next day being bright-eyed, bushy-tailed and happy and enthusiastic to another election campaign. And that was hard to do.
I bet you there's a lot of tired volunteers and tired Greens in New Paltz.
Yes, I had a great deal of support from Greens as individuals because we, I didn't seek political party endorsement because it was inappropriate for the election, just nonpartisan. But I had Republicans and I had Democrats helping me. Last year, I had a well-known Republican in town host a party in their house for me and they brought out, you know, locals and friends that were also Republicans. And so that I, you know, we've learned as a Green that we can't follow the one-party system that we have, which the position that I take is that Democrats and Republicans are really, for the most part, one party because their outcome for the most part is that are the same.
And when it comes to the children, I think especially, you can find people of all political persuasions and all parties that are going to want to have the same values for their children and want diversity and care about that. So it was great speaking with them.
So that, so we've reached across, you know? So that's why we can't say that it was a Green election. I happen to be a Green member and I had support from the Greens and I learned from them, but I also had support from Republicans and Democrats and independent voters also. So that made for a very interesting campaign. But for those out there that are interested in campaigns and elections, working with the traditional voters, you cannot overlook them and you need to meet their needs. That's why the power of a vote is very powerful. People do not recognize it because politicians need your vote to get elected and if they respond to your needs, then you're more likely to vote for them.
Now, there's a debate that some of us have that, like myself, that are kind of volunteers and campaigners, and that is that if you're running for office, especially in a third party where you probably won't win and you're trying and you're using your own funds and things to try to win, are you a politician or do you only become a politician when you're elected? So funny enough, Edgar, I've always thought of you as a colleague and a friend, but I think now you're a politician, but one of the nicer ones I've ever met.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I was genuinely trying to think of how to respond to that question. I ran. Um, I, I ran last year and, um, I continue to engage the community, you know, um, both publicly and privately in terms of my interests and values, uh, with the idea that I might run again, although, uh, five weeks before Election Day, I didn't think that I was running. It only occurred because suddenly while the board members decided that six years was enough and, uh, she announced it and then we had a, uh, we had like six days for the petitioning process and then four weeks for campaign. And as I said earlier, myself and many others were caught up with another election that was in the, which is a whole issue. Can you, is it possible to run two campaigns at the same time or something that, uh, who do scientists need to give some guidance on? Um, so I, you know, I'm happy to have seen you here this, um.
It's great to talk to you. Good conversation. I adore it.
Good.
And, um, and then I just wanted to ask if you do have any wrap-up thoughts or anything that you would want to say about, but when do you start being on board?
Officially, I started on July the first, but I was already invited, the election was, uh, last Tuesday, today is Sunday, I don't know, May the twentieth, I think it is. It was a May the, the fifteenth and on the sixteenth, I was invited to a board meeting and I sat at the table with, with the board members, said, could that vote? It happened when I think it's sworn in and that starts on July first, officially, but I'm already, uh, we're actually having a retreat this Wednesday, the board members, so I'll be learning about them. Tonight I'm having an orientation, uh, with the vice president of the board, part of kind of, you know, bringing me aboard, training me, and, um, what it's all about. And, you know, I, I'm really excited, I look forward to it. Um, I really encourage, um, folks that are out there that, uh, you know, you raised the question politician, well, I've not been a real politician my whole life, really. I've been a college professor and activist in my community, uh, but not a politician. But I really encourage people to get involved with electoral process, to serve the community by running for positions, uh, meeting your civic responsibility by going out there and being informed and voting. Uh, I think that, uh, it is extremely important that, that right that we have, uh, to vote and, and select who represents us and makes decisions for us. So I welcome, um, uh, you know, the interview today. It's a good, uh, way for me to recap the experience that I just had. Uh, I'm very much encouraged by it, I'm very fired up over it. I learned a tremendous amount being out there now, beyond those truly. For example, I, I've learned so much about the senior citizens, they really have a real problem with the high school taxes they pay. Many of their homes, I was surprised, were not being kept up because they really were making a choice between, you know, uh, cutting down, uh, trimming a tree or bush or painting the outside of the house or having the grass cut, uh, in order to meet the tax burden that the, that the elderly have. Uh, in that area, one of the things that I will push it back, because from my platform that I'm affiliated to, is that the funding of education, public education that is, should not come on the backs of, uh, property owners and homeowners and even renters who pay indirectly, uh, taxes, but that it should come from a general state fund, uh, from income tax, uh, with some kind of, that will provide an equitable basis for funding for public education all around the state, but allowing local, uh, school districts to have some ability to raise some, um, funding for projects that they may want.
Right. And that's a very Green issue to change the property tax-driven income, you know, school tax on property owners and make it more to the state government so that it's shared more equally and so that if it's a poor school district or a poor neighborhood, they don't suffer the consequences as much with their tax base. So that's another very Green issue, so.
Right. And that, that's why, uh, you know, I've been a member of the Green Party because they really provide a real alternative to what we now have, uh, because some of these, uh, locally felt kinds of issues are issues that are with the Green Party, they're really offering a new alternative, a new vision, uh, which I think is so critical to conserving our country.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the honor of your time.
Thank you. A pleasure.